It's six o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin as we always do with public audience. Anybody who would like can speak for five minutes and anyone who needs additional time, I'm always happy to meet separately. I'll begin with you, Helen. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Helen Peterson, 20 Long Drive. You have quite an agenda tonight. Looks very interesting. We're going to have lots and lots to be said. I'm not going to be able to stay. I have another meeting to go to. So I'm just going to have a few minutes to share with you some thoughts regarding your agenda item, which is way down, regarding how we could possibly designate Belden Forest for an old growth forest network. Okay, so it comes to you as a referral from the Open Space Committee with much pertinent information, pertinent conservation, science information. Also noted are the many benefits for the community environmentally and economically through tourism and so forth. We couldn't identify any negatives, really. I do consider the guided site walk a must. Only then can we really wrap our heads around it all. It has been a while, but I have fond memories of Belden Forest as I walked through often in the old, old days. As they say, timing is everything. Well, I say that because I would like to be a proponent for having this process be expedited if at all possible. So, timing is everything, and I hope we can proceed through this due diligence so that our community, Simsbury, can be first in the state to recognize the opportunity and be recognized for championing Belden Forest for its majestic value. I'm a member of the Open Space Committee, but I do wish to sort of speak to you personally tonight with my thoughts about the project to add to your conversation. I grew up in the city. We had frequent trips to the country to visit good friends on the farm, but it wasn't until I was in my late twenties when I found myself here in Simsbury in a home in the midst of all these glorious forests. And that was 56 years ago, more than half a century. Keep that in mind when you're thinking about the age of Belden Forest. So thus began my intimate relationship with the woods. That's what I call them. At first, I just enjoyed it all, but I came to depend on these forests for my well-being. And today, it is documented that spending time in the woods is beneficial to mental health. And that's not my say. That's been documented. In those early years, I was also part of a group that walked together regularly, seeking new places. Our pattern, we would pick an eight-mile trek at least once a week, maybe three times a month. Well, it worked. It was easy to find wide-open spaces, worn footpaths through fields, and maybe the trails, some trails in the woods, some on private land and some on public land. Simsbury, remember, was only about a third of its present developmental size today. So, some of those early footpaths are no longer there because they've been replaced with development. And what I need to mention is that that development's still happening at an alarming rate all around us. Belden Forest was a gift, and partially because of the wishes of the original gifter, it has remained basically untouched. We're also lucky, however, in that its location and the topography rendered it difficult to access with heavy machinery for logging. So, Belden Forest quietly, gracefully grew older and approximates an old-growth forest category. It's a jewel right in our midst. To officially designate it as such protects it further, but most importantly, more importantly, it allows us to expand on this gift for our community. We can treasure it as a living classroom, teaching us the necessary lessons of how a forest naturally and successfully reorganizes itself, revealing its capacity to sequester carbon and water, purify our air, and how its tree-to-tree connectivity assures its self-health, and how an older, provenly does, older forest, provenly does it all even better. So much to learn, but all the while, we can actively develop that important and intimate relationship as a forest takes care of itself. It takes care of us, and we learn how to take care of the forest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Helen. Yes, Diane.
I'll follow, excuse me, follow-up with Helen on the old-growth forest designation and won't go into my 51 years in Simsbury, and I've watched it develop and whatever, but please get this designation for Simsbury. The only thing I don't agree with Helen is I see absolutely no reason why we need to delay the process by taking a walk in the woods. I grew up in New York, went to what we would call a tree farm, which is different than a forest. All the trees nice and straight, all designed. And a man was coming out of the forest, out of the tree farm, and he said, "Don't waste your time. There are only trees there." So if you take a walk now to think you're going to learn something to help you, whether you want to preserve this as a low maintenance, let the forest manage itself, I don't know why you would walk in the woods in January, but that's where I disagree with Helen. I think you can ask for the old-growth forest designation as early as tonight. You could approve it. There is no legal obligation that it places on you, but what it does is it puts a feather in Simsbury's cap, first in Connecticut, to designate a forest that says, "We understand the principle of a forest growing and managing itself," and to use this as a laboratory for other forestry issues and other places, not only in the state but in the country, that are realizing, maybe this is the proper way to manage our land in the 21st century. So it's the general principle that in the gift of deed on this property, it says no logging. It says, "Keep your hands off our forest." The only persons they allowed were the heirs to the property. For a number of years, we're allowed to take so many cords of wood to maintain their heat in their property. So tonight, there's a big presentation on our anniversary. This forest ought to be listed as a visitation place. It's every bit as important as our sycamore tree. Every monument we have in town and every building is no more important than this treasure we have here. So I ask you to move quickly on this. There is no reason, there is no negative to moving forward for this designation. And there are long more than 50 minutes to give you the positives. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Diane.
Joan.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. At the last Board of Selectmen meeting on December 17th, 2018, there was lengthy discussion on the vaping epidemic impacting school-aged children. Selectman Chris Peterson stated that he wasn't sure that the nicotine-infused oils in the vaping or juuling delivery system is addictive. The National Institute of Drug Abuse answered the question, "Is nicotine addictive?" It states, "Yes, most smokers use tobacco regularly because they are addicted to nicotine." That's a quote. Johns Hopkins Medicine Post states, "Many e-cigarette users get even more nicotine than they would from a tobacco product. You can buy extra-strength cartridges, which have even a higher concentration of nicotine." End quote. Yale researchers in addiction medicine are concerned that teens may not know that they could be vaping with nicotine, a highly addictive drug. Vaping and juuling is equivalent to smoking one to two packs of cigarettes on one nicotine infusion. All medical evidence contradicts Selectman Chris Peterson's views on nicotine addiction when vaping or juuling. All medical evidence, continuing the discussion, Selectman and Chairman of Community for Care, Cheryl Cook, stated, and I quote, "You can buy more dangerous substances in a high school than anybody here can possibly imagine." End quote. Many of the dangerous substances that are circulated in the schools are pills that are prescribed by physicians for anxiety, depression, and pain that are in many homes. Medicine cabinets in other areas in homes are filled with prescriptions that are in plain sight for children to use and/or take to school for distribution. These pills are small and easily transferable without detection. Where is the conversation about pill addiction and distribution? The conversation should be on the societal dependence on mind-altering drugs. Physicians should not prescribe mind-altering drugs for anxiety, depression, and pain for every malady that are addressed with their patients. If society believes that using mind-altering drugs to cure all maladies is acceptable, we will be living in a zombie society that will decay with time. There is a very enlightening documentary on Netflix called "Happy." It is very enlightening to find out what makes people happy. There has been discussion in the past about the lack of response of volunteers to delivery timed responses on calls for ambulance service. There are shortages of volunteers and delivery services that once were the backbone of society. Volunteerism is at an all-time low and need of ambulance services is at an all-time high. Therefore, the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Service is a model built on past history and must be changed. As a result of my observations, I had a conversation with Town Manager of Avon, Brandon Robertson, about Avon's delivery of ambulance services with American Medical Response of Connecticut Incorporated, AMR. From July 1st, 2018 to June 19th, Brandon stated that he was very satisfied with their services with paid staff on duty at all times. Avon and Farmington use AMR for their ambulance delivery. I asked Brandon to forward a copy of Avon's AMR contract to me and a copy to Simsbury's Town Manager, Maria Capriola. I forwarded the contract to Chief of Police, Nick Bolter. The contract is 10 pages. The obligations of AMR is to provide service 24 hours a day, seven days a week. AMR will have one fully-staffed, advanced life support-level ambulance dedicated to responding calls in the town 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The obligations of the town is to provide a building for AMR staff, equipment, restrooms, parking areas, and area to wash vehicles and the use of the town gasoline to be reimbursed by AMR. There is performance review provided by an EMS management committee that is made up of two members and one alternate of the town that meets semi-annually. AMR provides a monthly activity report. The Simsbury taxpayers have been taxed for Simsbury Farms' golf course that continually has shortfalls with expenditures exceeding revenues. Golf courses are finding challenges that need professional management. Simsbury's Director of Finance reported on Simsbury Farms' overview states, "Simsbury Farms' fund expenditure exceeded revenues by $424,454 as of December 31st, 2018. The Simsbury Farms Golf Course Improvements Fund, 524, is showing a negative over balance of $9,609 for work performed on the fifth hole of the golf course. This work is being reimbursed by the Simsbury Men's Club. This report exemplifies the need for professional management to control expenditures and increase revenues on the golf course. I would urge the town to send out an RFP to contract the Simsbury Farms Golf Course to a professional management team. Filling positions on commissions has become a challenge with party affiliation required, giving only one-third of voters a chance to serve. I would suggest that voters change their party affiliation to serve the town. This would give registered unaffiliated a chance to participate." And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum Topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Joan.
Would anyone else like to speak in public audience? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Pat Weisprick. I live at 3 Lenora Drive in West Simsbury. This is sort of a prelude to a meeting that I'm going to be having with Maria and other people in town on Thursday. 3 Lenora Drive, my husband and I purchased in 1984. We've been there for 35 years. When we purchased the property, it came with an easement, the transmission line easement that goes through the town of Simsbury. We knew it was there. It had a grove of pine trees in front of the poles that are in the middle of the yard, middle of the backyard. And the wording of the easement is, "And the right at any and all times to trim and remove such trees and underbrush and other obstructions upon or adjacent to the land covered by said right-of-way, as is the judgment of the grantee, will interfere with or endanger said line or lines or the operation thereof when the same shall be built." And then it goes on to say that the grantor gets to be able to use the land that they own. Anyway, we've had a reasonable history with Eversource. For the first 27 years we lived there, I don't think we ever saw anyone from CLNP or NU. Then in 2011, when we had the snowstorm, we all know what came down and what came apart. So anyway, it was, at that time, we started putting together a spreadsheet of activity, which I have here, and it, Eversource really, really came down on us. We started our rather acrimonious relationship when they came in and mowed down a hedgerow of fierce forsythia. Fierce forsythia, yes. They took it, took them right down to the ground, and we complained about them, complained about it and got some restitution, but then they started on our horrible shed, and they wanted that moved too. Anyway, I have a spreadsheet that I can leave, and I believe Maria has a copy already, of the activity over time. And the actual purpose of my presenting this is not to seek any restitution of any sort, but to alert the town to what is going on. We've had some lovely presentations about trees, and this is about trees. Now, we all know that trees and power lines don't go together very well, and they do need to be managed. So we worked with Eversource with our trees. We knew they were getting large, and we tried to get them to top them. We tried to get them to trim them. Eversource has what I fondly call a scorched-earth policy. They just come in and they take everything down. So that's what happened on December 12th of last year. They came in and they took everything down. Over the course of time, Eversource has continuously referenced federal regulations, that everything that they're doing is federally regulated, their hands are tied, they have to do it, or they will get fines. So I have been in touch with FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and I have an email from a member of the commission that says, "Lines operated under 200 kilovolts would fall under the jurisdiction of your state Public Utilities Commission. Our research indicates that the transmission lines near 3 Lenora Drive, West Simsbury, are operated at 115 KV, which would not be specifically covered by FAC 003-4 standard." Okay, so there is a, let's see, there is a table in FAC 003-4 that gives minimum vegetation clearance distances, and the distances in the table are minimum distances required to prevent flashover. And in case anybody isn't really familiar with flashover, flashover is a high-voltage electrical short circuit made through the air between two exposed conductors. So they're concerned about flashovers. So the minimum vegetation clearance distances for a 115 KV line at sea level up to 500 feet, and I believe we're somewhere around 300, 350 feet elevation here in Simsbury, the minimum distance is 1.9 feet. They cleared 65 feet of our property. Why? Because they can. So what I am here to ask is for, who is regulating them, since the easement says that, uses language such as "in the judgment of the grantee" will interfere, will be dangerous? Who defines that? Right now, FERC doesn't. I've been in touch with PURA, the Public Utility Regulatory Agency, and I'm trying to get definition of that. I think it's, oh, it's five minutes. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're okay.
Boy, that went fast. Okay. So those are the sort of things that I'm looking for, and we will dive deeper into it on Thursday.
Yeah, I look forward to meeting on Thursday. Thank you.
Yes, so thank you. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak in public audience tonight? Okay, then we will move on to our first presentation, which is from the Simsbury 350th Committee. Steve Antonio is the Chair of that committee, and he'll be presenting. The presentation is informational, although they will be making an ask in the upcoming budget cycle. So this is our first opportunity to understand, you know, how that money is going to be spent and ask any questions.
Hi.
I'll turn it over to you, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
Great to see you, everyone. Thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight. I'm psyched to be here. I'm the Chair for the Simsbury 350th Anniversary Committee, and this is the first broch, broad overview that we're introducing it to you. And honestly, it's also the introduction of how the town can partner with us for this, what should, will be a great event. Tonight, as I said, we'll give a brief overview. We'll discuss the structure, the fundraising, the sponsorship we'll be pursuing, as well as, as I mentioned just a second ago, how the town can partner with us. It's the year 2020 that the town will have been around for 350 years, and it's an excellent reason for us to celebrate. It's an opportunity for us to come together and reflect on the past, celebrate the present, and look forward to our shared futures. All right, so the structure we've come up with, we've actually been working on this for a little while now, and I think we've, we've made great headway. We're, we have an organizational chart that is now well-defined and fairly populated at this point. The various teams and committees will work together, and we have an executive committee that will help guide the, all the other committees. On this slide, we show some of the many groups that are participating so far, and I just want to reiterate, it's just some of the groups. We're bringing more groups into the fold every day, and we want to have something for everyone as part of the celebration to participate. The next slide, establishing a new nonprofit is a time-consuming and expensive endeavor. Therefore, we've engaged Simsbury Main Street Partnership as our fiscal sponsor. They're a nationally accredited, award-winning, not-for-profit in Simsbury since 1996. I'm also proud to be a board member of that organization. Simsbury Main Street has helped many efforts in town by being a transparent and a very good fiscal sponsor to accomplish things. In addition to the revenue that we'll actually generate from the funds, we also have a committee that is dedicated to sponsorship. These are all people that have expertise in this area, and I feel secure that we'll have ample funding and also the, the revenue generated from events. All right, now for the fun part, the actual events that we're going to do. The first one we're going to do on May 12th, as you all know, it's the incorporation of our town in 1670. We will kick things off with, well, anyways, let me just look at the slide. Anyways, we're going to start things off with our opening ceremony on May 12th. We're going to end it up with a grand ball in the fall at the end of everything. And in between and inclusive, we have five signature events. We think some of them, if not all of them, could be something that will continue forward into the future. We're really proud of what we're proposing for events. Our first signature event is an antique show. We're very proud of our Memorial Day Parade, and we thought this would be a great way to complement it. It's going to be held over two days. We're proposing it to be down at the Performing Arts Center, and this is the first event that has the potential to be continued into the future. The second event is, again, a great, great event. It's River Day. It's to celebrate the Farmington River being in our town. We have multiple events over this date in several areas, and we've brought the Boy Scouts in. It's really, it's going to be a great day. I couldn't be prouder of what's coming together and gelling. So that's our second event. The third event, as we move forward into the summer, is our Traditional Country Fair. It's going to be GM-packed with fun for all ages. We'll have everything from agricultural displays, we'll have rides, and of course, we'll have my favorite, plenty of food. So that's definitely the reason I'll be there. The highlight of the fall season for our event is Oktoberfest. Many people may remember the beer festival the volunteer fire department might put on, some of them, anyone?
Yeah.
Anyways, it was a great event. We're looking forward to bringing it back and putting a more modern twist on it, bringing in the craft views, but also coming up with a food component in the form of a pizza contest, a buffalo wing contest, and just having the local restaurants participate with some German flair. There's no better way to wrap things up than a grand ball. Ours will certainly be that. This will be our final event of the series. It's going to be a fun and formal party to celebrate our anniversary and to thank everyone that participated in the celebration. On our next slide, these are our complimentary events. These are the events that take place quite often on an annual basis already, but we look forward to partnering with them to give them a little special flair for the 350th anniversary. It's an incomplete list. We're building it out, and as I said, we're trying to include all ages, all parts of our demographics, as well as all our community organizations. The next slide is, well, this is the first glance of what we've got planned, and here's how the town can partner with us to ensure the success. The slide represents our request for financial support, some venues to hold events on, a staff liaison so we can have one point person to, to discuss things with, and of course, insurance coverage. All right, the next steps as we move forward, we look forward to keeping everyone informed. As all of you, I think, know, Cheryl Cook has been an active participant in our As all of you, I think, know Cheryl Cook has been an active participant in our executive committee, and she will most certainly keep you all informed. We also will have our website, which is gonna be our main conduit to the general public. We've secured the domain name, and we'll post lots of information there for the general public as far as activities, as well as a way for the volunteers to come forward and the business community with any questions and ways they can participate as well. Thank you for your time again, and do you have any questions I can help clarify for you or answer? It doesn't have to be limited to the 350th?
So, thank you. That was a great presentation. It looks like you guys are well on your way to, to an awesome year of events. With respect to the overall financial support, what's, what's the number that's gonna fund the entire suite of events from, from May to November?
Are you talking the full, the full budget?
Yeah, I presume you're gonna be raising money as well. So, the town component is part of it, right?
Right. So, the town component, component, just to be point blank, is 35,000 is what we're asking the town for. Even though this event does cover two budget cycles, this is the one-time ask that just basically is planting of the seeds. Honestly, the full budget, at this point, we're still honing our numbers, but we feel it's gonna be about 10 times that. And I feel confident, though, that we'll be able to attain it. When you break it down line by line, it looks much more. But again, I just wanted to do a broad overview tonight. I welcome the opportunity to meet with you and bring you the specific committees. But like I said, if you start getting into the little, how do you say that word?
Minucha.
How does that work?
We have committees that are still working under budgetary items, so we don't have official numbers yet.
Okay.
No, it makes sense.
Yeah, but it's helpful to understand what, how that fits into the larger picture and what percentage that is.
I could just clarify for a second, if you don't mind. The initial ask is really to cover deposits. We have some expenses that we have to cover before we can even get going. We also have some administrative expenses, you know, the branding, making the logo, you know, doing some initial marketing pieces that are gonna require some funding before we can start the main fundraising and sponsorship seeking. So, that's really what that, that piece is.
Well, that makes sense. So, this is awesome.
You're invited.
Can I go? Can I go? I had this, I was even, the colonial, the colonial dress thing. Do you guys remember Martha's of Locking?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh. She put me in this miniature Noah Webster outfit when I was in third grade, and I had this name.
Miniature?
Well, it was like, it was like young Noah Webster, okay? I don't remember, but I, my mom still has it for like, for bribery purposes. She has the picture. So, I don't want flash, flash for to put my kids in that position. But anyways, I'll avoid that. I think that's an awesome list. I can't wait. I'm so excited for you guys. Thank you so much for volunteering to the, in every single person who is involved. I mean, please make sure that, that gets our, I will push for as much of the, I can relative to all of our obligations to help you fund what you need funded. And when do you think, when do you think you'll go live with your public asks for donations?
So, that should be within the next month, is when we're starting to, what we've, what we anticipate doing is, instead of having a bunch of tiny sponsors, and there'll be tons of places where local businesses can participate, but we're gonna be looking at trying to get some larger sponsors, and they will sponsor all of the events. So, you won't see one sponsor for one event. We'll have major sponsors that will be our sponsor throughout the entire 350th celebration.
Wait, anything like a, the Sewell Art Walk, or, or a cow or a horse? I mean, that, you know, use, you know, go with the, you know, theme of something that it's leading up to, it's a trail that brings in whatever the people can sponsor to be a part of it leading up to.
So, well, the good news is a couple of things. The Chamber of Commerce has just officially announced that they're bringing the Art Trail back for 2020. And so, they'll have different installations, but they are bringing that back, and that's a nice compliment. But for us, I think, we're really focused on the big events, and then things like Beer Day, which we already have our people.
They're working, they're working.
So, we have a lot of different projects. We also, the Historical Society, the library, and our school system are doing videos right now of different residents. They've been going around to McLean and others interviewing residents about what it's like in the last few days. So, we have a ton of other projects that are happening. So, we think that the Art Trail will complement it very nicely, but it's not something that we are gonna replicate. We're really focused on.
Maybe you up the sponsorship and take a piece of each of the items. Aaron, I'm trying to give you ideas, who knows?
I will just say, we have an idea, and we're open to more, but we have a packed schedule with the events that we're planning. And, you know, one major event is a lot of work, five major events.
It's awesome. Thank you.
Cause me to stay up a little.
So, no.
Thanks, Chris.
So, just, again, 'cause I can't on myself, back to the money. So, the requests for the startup funds, so when would those funds be needed?
So, we're looking for the 2019, 2020 year, so anytime, I guess, after July.
So, through the conversation, then this, this March, then?
Yeah, so that's what we're asking, because we're asking it to be included in the budget that you will be preparing in the upcoming months.
And then, because this is, this is actually fiscal as well, so the use of the performing arts at no cost or restriction, what is, what does that ask? What does that mean?
So, Sherri, do you want, do you wanna?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So, one of the things that we're asking for is that the town owns the Performing Arts Center, the Simsbury Meadows. And so, we're asking for you during your negotiations with the Performing Arts Center to save the dates where we have the Country Fair, Oktoberfest, and
The Antique Show.
Antique Show, kickoff.
That those dates would be blocked off for the 350th celebration. Having dealt with the Performing Arts Center, sometimes they add a bunch of restrictions in. We're asking that we not have those restrictions. Sometimes they've limited the distributors to, you could only use HDI and this and that, and so, we're asking not to have those.
Are these dates, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say to follow up, because, I mean, there is cost, there's trash, there's security.
Those are, we're not asking.
Yeah, we're not asking for that.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what no cost.
It's the rent, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, just the usage of the facility.
Just the usage of the facility.
No, that makes sense, okay.
For those premiere events, were, was there any consultation with the Performing Arts Center on, on those dates?
Did sit down with Missy.
We did have an initial consultation. Steve and Joe and I went and spoke to Missy when we had sort of a rough outline of the events. Now that they have all been back together, we sort of, Maria has her regular meeting with the pack, so I think she is going to pick up the baton, so to speak, from here, talking to them. And if any more information or collaboration from the committee is needed, one of the executive committee will step in and go back to discuss that with them.
Okay, Kenny?
But that was one of the things where we are gonna have to have some staff support for this, because there are areas where we are just not going to be able to make those arrangements with the town as, as a committee, so.
Yeah, okay. Were there any other questions?
Just one comment.
Yeah, Mike?
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, great presentation. Thank you. Okay. Our next presentation is what organizers are calling the Trail of Thanks, and Joe, feel free to step up. I don't know if I can classify it as, it's basically a public art installation.
Yeah, I would say that.
Of sorts, of a historical bent.
Correct.
And, again, this presentation is informational, but the Board of Selectmen would need to accept this asset, so that's our first opportunity to ask some questions.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. I think the overview on the 350 is very exciting. I think this also really complements, complements what is being done with the 350. And the Trail of Thanks had different names before this, so you may have caught wind of something called Trail 10K, Thanksgiving Trail. But there was a lot of input from the town members, citizens, as well as tourism and other groups of the name, in that we transitioned to Trail of Thanks. And so, I'd like to give you an overview of that at this time. Tom, if you could, you know, pipe in anytime on this, and, because we've been working closely with the Parks and Rec throughout this time. And the, so what is it? And, you know, we started to talk about that a little bit with Eric, is an outdoor public attraction designed as an historically-themed driving and biking trail, okay? The purpose is to highlight Simsbury's ancient history, not just the recent history, but looking back, there's been residents in this area for over 10,000 years. And to start looking at that human habitation, each stop would have a kiosk and a sculpture or monument at that location, and there would be an emphasis on Native Americans, again, prior residents, and residents of the, of this area. All stops would be handicap accessible in a beautiful park-like setting. And we'll give you examples of that as we go along. The, these are the proposed locations. Start with the Historical Society. We're already doing work there. I'll go through that briefly with you. To Town Forest Park, the Apple Barn area near Simsbury, right in Simsbury Farms, Terriffill Park, and possibly Talcott Mountain State Park. And that's a state park, so that's really something. The, the benefits to the town that we feel is increased visitation, attention to public parks. We heard a little bit more about Beldon Park and Woods and other areas earlier today, too, and to try to look at visitation and enhance the reputation by being the first Trail of Thanks site, not just, just anywhere in the United States. So, this model shell and template could be applied in other places, and I'll talk about that in a minute, too. Increase tourism to support local businesses, create and help celebrate the 350th anniversary that we talked about earlier, and to teach local appreciation of natural environment and the 10,000 years of human habitation right here in Simsbury. The responsibilities, the Historical Society basically would oversee this project, design and construction, promotion of all stops, secure the permits and approvals, we've been working that process already, overseeing the participation of local partner organizations, scouts perhaps, and others that would be involved, and to continue maintenance and promotion of the, those locations, as coordination of future Trail of Thanks sites and organizations in the Americas. So, this could be a much larger initiative going forward, but we'd be the first ones. So, the partners currently are, as we said, the Historical Society. We've been working closely with the Institute of American Indian Studies. That's in Washington, Connecticut. I was just up there on Friday talking to their executive director about the initiative. They would do research for us in the, on our area, as well as the state itself. The East Coast Greenway Alliance, and start working on, they started to work already on tribal maps of the 3,000-mile pathway. So, they actually put a newsletter out last week on this, which is very interesting, of the research they're doing on this. We'd be the first. The, there may be other also people involved with this, groups going forward, proposed stop. First one, Historical Society would be homelands, implementation in the springtime, basically. We'd have a Native American wigwam display right on our property. It aligns very well to 350. It already went through zoning and the appropriate procedural areas, so we'll start construction on that in the time period of June and, March and, through June, a very authentic design. And we'd start to do tours and pilots from there. We'd also have exhibits. We already started mass collections, and donations are just coming in now on the stone artifacts right from Simsbury, as well as rotating Native American exhibits would be on our property of the Historical Society. And this is just a photograph of a wigwam that's located in New Pauls, New York. If you've ever been up in that area, the Eukanot Museum, it's absolutely gorgeous. The inside is really inviting. I mean, it's not, it's very sophisticated in its design. The second stop proposed is Town Forest. I was out there with Tom, and I think Melissa was out there, Maria was out there, earlier last year, just to look at the feasibility of this initiative. The focus there would be on mobility, and with proposed structures, would be silhouettes. That would be located, I'll show you that on the next slide. It really looks at that area, there's many paths through that area, and many of them were part of main paths that really ran to the western areas of New York even. Then later on, railroad tracks went through that area. Now it's back to hiking trails, biking trails, so it's interesting to see the loop that we see there. And this is just a simple example of what could be there in silhouettes on the, on the walkways. It's very close to where the, the bridge is and the picnic benches, right? I guess that would be.
Yeah, to the left of the bridge that goes to the, that part of the handicap path on the, A path going up to the bridge, the accessible path, just to the left of that.
Right. And these would be silhouettes. These are not the exact silhouettes. We would design these and sculpture these over time to what they would look like. The spacing would be that individuals, residents could go in between the statue, take photographs on it and with this. So, that would be the Town Forest. There may be other silhouettes, wildlife ones, I just selected turkeys here, that could be within the tree line area, too, to show the wildlife that still is sustainable, that has been brought back into our town over a period of time, that were there for thousands of years, and other animals also. So, that's the second. The Apple Barn area near Simsbury Farm Community, this would look at calendar stones. Calendar stones are throughout the United States. They're finding them in New England this time. Obviously, the ones in Europe, the Stonehedge, the Mayan temples in Mexico talk about reading the stars and how they read those, and how the, the equinox was so important. And we would propose a very simple structure similar to that, that could be seen. And it would look, this is one happens to be right in Deep River, Connecticut, that shows the winter solstice and how that stone aligns to the setting, the setting sun. So, that would be a stone structure. So, it's very natural, aligned with the park itself. The, the Terriffill Park is sustenance, and it would deal with the fishing, the salmon runs, as well as the sturgeon that came up this river, happened for thousands and thousands of years. There's documentation that back in the colonial days, you could almost walk across the river based on how many fish were in the river coming up at that time. So, we have a great history of this. This would talk about that. Actually, Mark Banks, a local archaeologist, wrote his doctoral dissertation on the subject and this area, so there's a lot of research on this area. That's very interesting. And this one would look, and it's a little, little hard to see maybe, but if you know where the three trestles are in the middle of the river, these panels, which would be probably steel, panels would be aligned to those backdrops of the trestles. So, the trestles really frame the panels that you see there, in that you would have stones that you would stand on to perfectly align, seeing the panel, the first one, being a wigwam with drying fish, many salmon coming up the river. The second one would be the mills coming in. And this is all the natural progression of towns in New England. The mills coming into the river, a little less fish. And then finally, there was actually factories along the river, Terriffill especially, dams being created. But as you see here, there's, the next slide you can go through in detail, shows all the different areas. But the stones you would stand on, the fourth one, would actually look at viewing the river as it is today, with no obstructions, no trestles, just imagining that. Then the fifth one being, what would the river look like 100 years from now? And let people think about that and talk about that. And the purity of the river, would the fish be back, the salmon be back in the areas again? So, that's a little bit on Terriffill. Lastly, Talcott Mountain is a state facility. We really haven't done a lot of work on this area because it's really much more complex in that area. So, proposed next steps would be town approval process that we're going through at this time, even with this conversation today, designing wooden prototypes and information panels, place the wooden prototypes in proposed locations, then review the prototypes with town officials, get the input of the town, and then actually build the actual panels and the sculptures and monuments, and then finally place those in the locations. Tom made up and took photographs of proposed locations at each of the, the areas on the town property, so you could actually see it there. And if you have any questions, this is the Terriffill Park location, that you could see where the trestles are right behind it. And you can see the, it is a cul-de-sac there, if you know, on Terriffill. It's right at the end of Talcott. So, it's a real cool section there. So, any questions?
Fascinating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Great. Joe, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on now to the first selectman's report and then the town manager's report. As we approach budget season, I wanted to share the process as well as some key dates, both for the public and the Board of Selectmen. The town manager will be presenting her proposed budget to the Board on Monday, February 25th. Saturday, March 2nd, is the Board of Selectmen's Budget Workshop, where we'll spend much of that day reviewing the detail in each part of the proposed budget. The next date is Tuesday, March 19th. We'll be presenting our proposed budget to the Board of Finance. And then Tuesday, April 2nd, there'll be the public hearing at the library. And finally, the budget referendum is scheduled for May 14th at Henry James. So, these dates will also be in Um, so these dates will also be in the version that we email out, but I wanted folks to have that. I really do encourage anyone interested in being involved in the process, um, to do so, come to meetings, speak in public audience, approach any member of your Board of Selectmen. Um, I'll be using this space to provide updates and also providing links to any, uh, key documents as part of the process. Uh, Christmas tree collection, Paine's customers can put their trees on the curb on their regular trash day this week-
This week.
Right? And then always customers can put their trees on the curb on their regular trash day the week of January 28th. Um, the Economic Development, uh, Commission is seeking a new member, uh, we're particularly looking for someone with expertise in architecture, land use, or communication, uh, due to resignation. There's information on how to apply on the homepage of the town website. And since this would be filling a position that was previously held by a Democrat, per town charter, this spot also needs to be filled by a person who's a registered Democrat. In my time as first selectman, I've come to learn about the prevalence of vaping among high school and even some middle school students. There was a study released last month by the University of Michigan, which found, uh, it surveyed more than 44,000 teenagers. It found that while many forms of substance abuse are steady, um, are steady or declining, vaping continues to be on the rise. Uh, earlier this month, Community for Care held an excellent program that you can view on SCTV. Uh, I found it through a Google search, but I'm providing a hyperlink in the version that, that was emailed out, so I, I do encourage folks, especially, uh, parents to check it out. The need to improve cell service, uh, in town came up as one of the Board of Selectmen's priorities. I want to report that Verizon, uh, is in the process of installing five small towers to improve its local service, including one near the Maple Tree Cafe. Uh, that tower, I'm told, is expected to be online at the end of January, which is good news. Similar cell towers have been installed already, uh, across from, uh, Simsbury High School and off Winslow Place. Uh, a few bullets from the Planning Department, the Zoning Commission held a public hearing for the redevelopment of One Old Bridge as a park at their last meeting, that's the Betty Hudson property. The application was approved, and the project now has secured all the local board and commission approvals in order for it to proceed. A text amendment was approved by the Zoning Commission to permit distilleries and breweries in the town center. After the text amendment approval, an application has been filed for a distillery for the Hickson Building, the old train station building behind Bank of America, and that's set for a public hearing on February 4th. Finally, uh, 690 Hot Meadows Street, which is the Ensign Mansion, is proceeding along. Five apartments are being built in the historic building, along with the restaurant Metro Beast, which will be, uh, moving into the annex, which is on the south side of the property. Metro Beast is still on track to open in its new location at the end of February in that building. I invite you to join us for a celebration of the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., that's scheduled for 2:00 PM on January 21st at First Church. We'll be remembering, uh, Dr. King's life and legacy, including his time spent in Simsbury. The keynote speaker this year will be UConn Professor Joelle Murchison, and the theme of her speech will be "Living the Dream in Times of Trouble." Finally, Simsbury Trail News, the next meeting of the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee is this Thursday, 10:00 AM in Program Room 2 at the library. Also, please note that the Farmington River Trail, right near the high school, is flooded and, uh, iced over about 200 yards west of Bushy Hill Road, and I've been informed that the trail is impassable in that area. So, that's my report, I'll turn it over to Maria.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, we have one, uh, request for an addition to the agenda this evening. Uh, we have received a request, um, from the Republican Town Committee, um, regarding multiple appointments and reappointments to, uh, a number of our advisory boards and committees. Um, so I would respectfully request this evening that we add proposed appointments and reappointments to various appointed committees and boards, uh, to the agenda under the Appointments and Resignation section, and that could be done so with a two-thirds vote of, uh, the board this evening. Uh, we did email out supporting documentation this afternoon, and hard copies were left at your desk for this evening. Uh, for our budget update, uh, review and analysis of the fiscal 1920 operating and capital budget requests, along with our service improvement requests is currently underway. Uh, myself and Melissa and Amy are, uh, working on that at the moment with our department head team. Uh, and then as Eric mentioned, um, the budget presentation, uh, will be February 25th and the Budget Workshop on March 2nd. Uh, just regarding financial management, um, I did want to let you know that the Board of Finance at their meeting tomorrow night will be reviewing our quarterly budget status report, uh, you'll recall that we implemented that last quarter. Um, they will also be reviewing, uh, the results of our fiscal 1718 audit. Um, I also want to commend the Finance Department, um, for turning that around much more quickly this year. As you may recall, last year we had to file a number of extensions, um, and we didn't even wrap that up until, I think, two days after my arrival, so it was very, very late into January. So I'm just really pleased with the work that the Finance Department did, um, to help turn this around much more timely, so thank, thank you to them. Uh, we will have both of those items on your agenda, uh, for your next meeting on January 28th, so you have an opportunity to review those items as well. Under Departmental News and Notes, uh, Community and Social Services, uh, they will be having a staff training on CPR and AED. Um, the Farmington Valley, uh, Nurses Association is going to be conducting that training for our staff. For Special Events and Programs, uh, Community and Social Services is reporting, uh, that they will be offering suicide prevention training, uh, referred to as QPR, um, that's going to be held on Wednesday, January 16th, from 1:00 to 2:30 at Ena Memorial Hall in the old courtroom on the lower level. Uh, this is being sponsored by the Farmington Valley Health District, and this training is actually free and open to the public. Um, I've actually had this training in the past, it's really wonderful, and I would encourage folks to have the opportunity to attend. And then we have two programs at the Library of Noe, on Sunday, January 20th, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. The library is hosting, um, a soprano and a pianist, um, they are going to present Martin Luther King Jr. a life. Um, Ms. Ross, uh, will be providing select speeches and matching them with some of Dr. King's favorite music. And the library is also excited to welcome back Phoenix Performing Arts, uh, they'll be ringing in the Chinese New Year on Saturday, February 9th, from 2:00 to 3:30 PM. Uh, they'll be performing a variety of Chinese classical and traditional dances and sharing information about Chinese arts and culture. Great, thank you, and that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, great, thanks Maria. Uh, so before I forget, is there a motion to, uh, add the additional, um, appointments and reappointments to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, perfect. Moving on to Selectmen Action, Tax Refund Requests under Item A, is there a motion effective January 14th, 2019, to approve the present, the presented tax refunds in the amount of $8,923.48, and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item B is a proposed donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming, uh, Inc. Is there a motion effective January 14th, 2019, to accept a donation from Garrity Asphalt Reclaiming, Inc. in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Service Department programs that assist residents in need?
So moved, with our thanks.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Item C is the, uh, proposed revisions to the, uh, naming rights policy and naming of, uh, two rooms at the library. Uh, so last month, the, uh, Library Board of Trustees voted unanimously to endorse renaming Program Room 2, the Weetog Room, and the new Pro- Program Room that's currently under construction, the Terriffill Room. Before we take action on that, uh, Maria is recommending some minor changes to the naming rights policy due to the change in the form of government. Seemed very minor, Maria, I didn't know if you wanted to expand on anything?
Uh, sure. The only substantive change I'm recommending in reviewing the policy, um, would be to add, um, that the board has the option, uh, when somebody submits a request to you, to, uh, accept that recommendation. Um, currently, as the policy is currently written, it provides you two options, one is to reject the proposal, or to send it to a subcommittee, of which you would then name and appoint individuals to that subcommittee. Um, just from a process perspective, I felt that if the board received an application and you felt that it didn't need further vetting, that, uh, you should be able to be empowered to sort of make that decision once you've received the recommendation. So, um, that is a recommended change to the policy from me, uh, but that is the only substantive change that I was recommending.
Okay. Any questions on the policy change or the naming? Is there a, uh, motion effective January 14th, 2019, to revise the naming rights policy as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, second, is there a motion effective January 14th, 2019, to approve, uh, naming Library Program Room 2, the Weetog Room, and naming the new Program Room, anticipated to be completed in May of 2019, the Terriffill Room?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Is there gonna be any folks from West Simsbury that are upset we excluded them?
Yeah. We got village issues now.
That's kind of the, uh-
We're gonna have to find another room.
We're gonna have to find another room.
You know what happens here, right?
I know.
We're gonna be appropriating money for an, for an addition to the building.
I'm just glad they chose not to name it after a person, so-
Yeah.
Our history has not been excellent when we get on that road.
It all falls apart.
Right. Appreciate the thoughtfulness.
The, the costs associated with this, I noticed one is, is coming from the grant, because that's the lower level, but the upper level one, is that a friend's?
That would be the operating budget.
Oh, okay. So, that's-
Were there any other questions? Okay. Uh, I think we're, it's time for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, and that motion carries. Uh, Item D is the proposed revisions to, uh, the circulation assistant job description and the job title. Uh, so earlier this evening, the Personnel Subcommittee endorsed the proposed change to the job description. Essentially, uh, the, um, you know, libraries change over time, and, um, the individual in this job has been doing, uh, an expanded scope, and this is basically codifying that the, that the scope of the job is beyond circulation. Maria, anything you would add to that?
Sure, so, um, in addition to, um, the job description changes, which we would characterize as housekeeping in nature, we are also recommending a change, uh, to the job titles, uh, I often also refer to that as a classification title. Um, so we were recommending, um, that the circulation assistant position be renamed to Library Services Assistant. Um, we are not recommending any change to pay grade or compensation, uh, this is purely just a job title and job description change.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion effective, uh, January 14th, 2019, to approve the proposed modifications to the job description, and to change the job title for the circulation assistant position to the Library Services Assistant, Adult Department, as presented?
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
Second.
Okay. So moved. Chris seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We- Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, Item E is a proposed amendment to, uh, all culture parks and rec, uh, fee schedules. At our last meeting, uh, the board approved, uh, the, uh, fee schedule for the golf course, and there was some discussion about the past practice of offering discounts through websites like Groupon, and Selectmen Askem, uh, raised the, raised the point that that's not something that, that, you know, this board approved. So what Maria is proposing is to codify it by basically offering language in all fee schedules that allows for staff to offer these promotions from time to time.
I appreciate this. I can make, again, I have no issue with the discounts, I just, again, from a clarity and a transparency standpoint, I think this just clears up any issues, so if the public or anyone else would be confused or concerned, it's all out here, it's been reviewed, and we're very comfortable with it, so, at least I am.
Bring it up, Sean. Any questions or comments? Okay. Good idea. Uh, is there a motion effective January 14th, 2019, to accept the, uh, proposed language regarding special promotions and discounts as an amendment to all culture parks and rec fee schedules?
So moved. Second.
Uh, Mike seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And that motion carries, thank you. And thanks for following up on that, Maria.
You're welcome.
So Item F is, uh, the Old Growth Forest Network designation for Beldon Forest. There was robust discussion about this in our Open Space Committee meeting at the very beginning of the month, and there were basically two recommendations, uh, from the committee. I would say the committee was generally supportive of the concept, but one recommendation was to, uh, schedule a site walk of the property, uh, with the Board of Selectmen, Open Space, and Conservation, and also refer the, uh, question to, to Conservation, since currently Conservation oversees the stewardship of open space before moving forward. I'll also say that, um, I think some of the feedback we heard around why we might want to consider moving quickly on this, is that if we wait too long, we might not be the first community in Connecticut to have this designation, if that's something we think is important. So with all that, I just wanted to see if there were any questions or conversation.
Um, is it okay?
Yeah, please.
Um, I've, thank you, Susan Mosley, for bringing this to our attention, um, a while ago, and I'm glad that it's finally come to this. Um, I would say for me, I, I would have to agree with Chris's mom, that-
Good, good, good idea.
Because it's never a good idea to disagree with Chris's mom, but, um, that we, um, move forward with this. I, I think that, you know, with, this has been sitting for a long time, um, and a lot of, I think she's right, you know, I think we're all familiar with, with the area, and certainly the town, um, commissions are familiar with the area, so I don't see that as a necessity. I'm not sure what that would change, you know, if anything. Um, and certainly, all of the, the research and prep work was done early on, um, including the research of the site, uh, the growth there, the, the vegetation, you know, all of that was done, so I don't really see why we shouldn't move forward with this.
Yeah. So to be, to be clear, what you're suggesting is to move forward at tonight's meeting with actually, um, approving the designation?
I am.
Okay.
So we would typically refer this to Conservation, I mean, that would be our standard process. And as we've seen in the documentation here, you know, our, our current setup is Conservation, post-acquisition of land, is always involved in decisions relative to ongoing stewardship. So I do think it's an important step of the process to refer to Conservation, so I actually would not support, uh, uh, voting for a designation tonight, because I think that referral is, is really, uh, important and appropriate.
Can I suggest a compromise? That we begin to prepare the submission of the designation, and quickly refer to Conservation to attach that, uh, recommendation from them, because I don't think we need to wait, I'm 99% sure Conservation will be comfortable with this, so let's-
Given what we heard.
Let's move along with the, all the administrative tasks, so that the moment we do get that referral, we can submit the paperwork appropriately.
Yeah, I would even add, Sean, if we feel there's a sense of urgency, and, and for me to be the first in the state of Connecticut is of value, but we also could request a special, you know, that, that Conservation has a special meeting to try to expedite their process, so.
Conservation actually has a meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Right.
Um, right, so, um, because their regular meeting would have fallen during a holiday during January, they actually only have one meeting during, uh, during January, which is tomorrow. Um, they have another meeting scheduled on February 5th, so if we wanted to give them a bit of time to sort of review the materials and, um, you know, prepare, that's, there are two regular meetings that, that we're working with, again, are the one tomorrow night or February 5th.
So, as the layers on to Conservation, I was planning on attending anyway, so I'm more than willing to share with them our concern, to try to expedite this, if they would agree to a special meeting, a blessing and all that stuff, which won't mean anything, but nonetheless, um, I think, I would think they would be in favor of this, and moving along on it would be good for everybody involved, if only to keep Chris from getting in more trouble, so I'm more than willing to do that.
Thank you. Is there, is there something afoot that we're not aware of, like, are we competing with another town for something, like?
Well, I did get, you know, I'm the Hartford County Coordinator for, for this, and I did get a submission from Enders Forest, I got some photos and a description and GIS location. Fortunately, it's wintertime, so I've kind of been-
Slow?
A little bit treading water, and I sent it to some other experts, and they said, "Well, these might be some old trees, we're not sure." So it's not 100% sure, but there are three forests in Litchfield that they're meeting about, like this month and next month, that are owned by land trusts that are, we think are gonna be eligible. And hot off the press, I just got, um, I'm going to see a, um, part of the north branch of the Park River on Thursday afternoon, we think there might actually be some, like, real old growth forests in Hartford, which would be like, really, really, really exciting.
That's the part they didn't bury with concrete?
Yeah, exactly.
Right before, they buried it, they left a little area there that somehow has gotten Right before they buried it, they left a little area there that somehow has gotten spared.
So we're racing against Litchfield and Hartford here?
Yeah. The Hartford thing is really exciting.
I can imagine, but I'd be like being first.
If we waited till the second week of February to...
I think you're okay. Well, I've been keeping in touch with them. I'm like, well, we had like a year head start on these other cases, and they basically said until we get something else, and I'm in touch with the other, I have my fingers on these other possible submissions, so I think we have this under control. But the Hartford thing, if we find it in Hartford, I mean, that's just going to be so exciting. So that would probably be in the press pretty quickly if we got some...
Well, I'm sure it's too icy in Litchfield to walk up there.
Exactly. Luckily, we have the weather working for us.
Hartford is completely, you know, a little bit chaotic. I'm not quite sure that's going to be their first concern in the City Council, so I think we probably have a...
Yeah, I think we're still okay, but I do appreciate you keeping this process moving, because we had such a head start. It would be a shame to, like, lose it at this point.
I am in complete agreement with, although, you know, I cannot stand ministrivia. I am understanding of Chris's concern, you know, because he hates to tap on toes, so...
Yeah, so I'm also hearing that we're okay without the site visit.
Yeah, oh yeah. I've walked it many times.
I've been there.
Is there a motion to refer consideration of the Old Growth Forest Network designation for Beldon Forest to the Conservation Commission? The purpose of this referral is to seek the commission's viewpoint on designating Beldon Forest as an old growth forest. A referral response is respectfully requested as soon as possible.
Can we put a date on that?
Well, there was a date of February 6th, but I'd love it sooner than that.
When is our next meeting?
Uh, January 28th?
Maybe they can be encouraged to do sooner than later.
Yeah, prior to January 28th. Okay, super. Is there a...
Let Chris second it, so his mom doesn't get mad at him.
Chris, you seconded it?
Third and fourth.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
I'm going to say this is like provisional, so I think we've got a lock on. This is kind of like submitting your house bid, you know? We're under contract, so in case...
Okay.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Who made the motion on that? I'm sorry.
Mike did. Mike did. And item G is revisiting the discussion regarding the sale of tobacco, nicotine, and vaping products. And I wanted to follow up with the board. If I were to summarize where we landed with our last meeting, is that this is an issue. I think there was consensus that this is best regulated at the state level so as to avoid a patchwork of local regulation. The Farmington Valley Collaborative drafted a letter that would be sent to our delegation in Hartford urging action on pending legislation. The legislation specifically that would raise the age from 18 to 21 to purchase these products got wide support in 2018, but eventually didn't move forward. So what I wanted to ask the board, I intend to sign this letter as myself, but we have an opportunity for me to sign it on behalf of the board in this town, so that's the question that I wanted to ask tonight, whether there'd be support in doing that.
As much in favor as I am of doing something, I really think it is much more powerful to do it statewide, and I would really prefer to do it statewide versus, if I understand your question, it would be Simsbury doing this ourselves, correct?
This would just be me signing a letter that would be urging the state...
Oh.
To pass something statewide specifically around raising the age.
Then I am supportive of it. I misunderstood. I apologize.
Eric, go ahead. Oh, I'm supportive of it. There were two things the other night at the Community for Care meeting I heard that really resonated with me relative to supporting this. The first was when they were talking to a couple of the police officers, but they were indicating the issue isn't so much limiting the offering of it within stores within a community, it's more that there are people who are of legal age, older kids who are of legal age that will be able to access it. So this kind of speaks to the value of diminishing the ability of a senior to legally purchase it and then be able to distribute it to younger kids. I thought that was interesting. And then one of the speakers did give an estimate of if it was moved to 21, and I don't know how, they presented it as an accurate estimate. I think the percentage, they felt that if it was moved to 21, it would cut down consumption by about 17% was what they indicated.
Hard to estimate, but...
Right. So they did give an estimate as to, you know, what that impact was. So, you know, recognizing the extent of the issue, recognizing those two facts makes me supportive of the proposal. Eric, okay, thank you. Chris?
I have to say, one of the more disturbing things, aside from what's actually in those pods, and it can be essentially an overdose of nicotine or a marijuana substance, which has a higher concentration than marijuana that you would ingest by smoking, both equally bad for young brains, is that, you know, for the first time in decades essentially now, the use of regular tobacco products in teenagers is increasing due to the use of vaping products, because the nicotine in the vaping products is so addictive that it literally takes a matter of days using one of these products to establish the addiction, and they are more likely to use a regular tobacco product after that. So all of the good work that's been done to reduce smoking rates, you know, is now starting to be reversed, which is a disturbing trend for public health as a whole, and particularly for young people. So yes, we should do this.
Sure, I thought the other fact that is pretty disturbing is that one pod is the equivalent of a full pack of cigarettes. So what a student might smoke as kind of a, you know, what they view as a smaller experience is actually the equivalent of a full pack of cigarettes, so...
Yeah, there actually is a condition now, which they're starting to document in a formal way, is nicotine poisoning, similar to alcohol poisoning, is the effect on the brain of that concentration of nicotine can be just as dangerous, you know? So it affects the respiratory system, the cardiac system, digestive systems, you know, and more, most importantly, the functioning of your brain, which in young people is particularly dangerous.
Yeah, I read an article recently after our last discussion that was particularly poignant. It was the top five substances that are most addictive, and no surprise, heroin and opioids were number one, cocaine was number two, nicotine was number three.
Yeah.
So to give that some scope, that up there with two of the nastiest substances on earth, and nicotine being the third, alcohol and caffeine were the other two, which was particularly interesting. So again, I fully support this, and I appreciated that the letter did go to the extent of, as we talked about, not, while we are focused on the younger population, this is dangerous for everybody.
It is dangerous for everybody.
So asking folks at the legislature to consider that, whereas these products pose a health risk to all residents, because again, I don't think that should go on notice. It's not a good idea for anybody, so...
And that's absolutely true, nicotine poisoning.
Yeah, which is a real thing.
It's a real thing, yeah.
Eric, one other element is some of the police officers and other individuals who interact with the high school students were saying that if you ask the high school students what they think of smoking, they think it's an absolutely disgusting...
Disgusting, yeah.
Habit, because, you know, society frowns on that. But when they ask about this, they don't have the same attitude. It's legal, it's safe, what's the big deal? It's cool.
It tastes like bubble gum.
Now it's being marketed to them. So something that is equally disgusting, they don't perceive it as such. So I actually think, again, raising the minimum age is a way of culturally signaling that this is not a healthy habit to have, that there are other elements to it that they're not aware of that they need to be...
Well, and the fact that it's used as a delivery system for other substances other than nicotine, such as marijuana, is equally disturbing. And our school resource officers did a great job demonstrating with actual items confiscated from Simsbury High School students, how, you know, you can hold a flash drive in your sleeve and sit in class, and the teacher never knows it's happening.
Wow.
And because the marijuana in the pod is not burned, you know, it's not combusted like smoking, there's only a brief odor of what you would probably recognize as marijuana, and then it's masked by the vapor. So even kids sitting a few rows away might not know that it's happening.
Any other conversation? Thank you for all the points that have been made.
I will tell you, as a sitting on the Juval Review Board, the information that is shared with us is really staggering, and I'm glad my kids aren't at the high school anymore. And I'm serious. It's not a good thing, and it is very much as was just described, where smoking is horrible, but this is nothing. And it's pretty scary.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion effective January 14th, 2019, to authorize me, First Selectman Eric Wellman, to sign the attached letter on behalf of the board and the town?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. Appointments and resignations. Is there a motion effective January 14th, 2019, to appoint Brian M. Watson as a regular member of the Board of Education with a term expiring December 2nd, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Lori Feldman as a member of the Economic Development Commission, retroactive to December 27th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Sean, would you mind introducing the law motion?
Sure, and I appreciate the board's indulgence on these. These are some cleanup items for the Republican appointees that are not co-terminists with the Board of Selectmen. So I'm looking for a motion effective January 14th, 2019, to appoint the following people as presented. The reappointments for aging and disability are Mary S. Fleet, a Republican, as a regular member with a term expiring January 1st, 2023, and Erickson, a Republican, as a regular member with a term expiring January 1st, 2023, Susan Krensky, a Republican, as a regular member with a term expiring January 2023, and Mr. Edward LaMontaigne, an unaffiliated, as a regular member with a term expiring January 1st, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks.
Thank you, sir. There's two more items here. We've got the Board of Ethics reappointment, or excuse me, this is a new appointment, but again, a Republican post, Andrew Brazier Jr., Republican, as a regular member with a term expiring January 1st, 2023, and the reappointment of Lynn Racchio, an unaffiliated member, as a regular member with a term expiring January 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And then we have Mr. Mark Nyquist for the Storick District, Republican, as an alternate member with a term expiring January 1st, 2024. Marks him to the wormhole.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have two more on the second page, the appointment, Board of Ethics, Gary Kevorkian, Republican, as a regular member with a term expiring January 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the Building Code Board of Appeals, Mr. Todd Thode, Republican, as a regular member with a term expiring January 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Next is the review of the minutes from our December 17th meeting. Any proposed changes? Okay, they look good to me as well. Thank you. Any selectmen liaison and subcommittee reports?
Just a quick thank you from the Community for Care for all those people who participated in our panel, our school resource officers, our Director of Community and Social Services, and Jennifer Cortanas, the Farmington Valley Health District Director, also participated, and Simsbury resident Tom Steen, who was our moderator, all volunteered their time to give us valuable information, and we thank them for doing that.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Anything under communications anyone wanted to bring up?
So I appreciate the review on the river height. I would encourage us to talk about lower than 10 feet, though. While I understand from a floodplain standpoint, that is the action stage, and again, as I can tell you, as being a former rower, that river moves at six feet, seven feet, that is far beyond what most people can appreciate. So again, I'm no expert on what the height is, but I trust the town staff will continue to work with folks to make sure that that's a safe environment. And the challenge is not going upstream or downstream, it's actually turning, is when the incidents with either cruise shells or otherwise happen, because obviously the force of the river will cause the boat to turn over at that point, so...
Okay.
But thank you for looking into that, Tom, I appreciate it.
Okay, anything else from communication?